Probably comments on work session related items. Is there anyone tonight that would like to comment on the work session related items? If so, state your name and address, and also would you write it on that piece of paper, please?
Yes, my name is Kelly Greavy. My address is 606 Broad Avenue. I may be a couple seconds over five minutes, is that okay?
I got your time. Okay, I'll wait two seconds. Go ahead.[27.89][27.89](Laughter).[28.89][28.89](Laughter).
Good evening, council members. My name is Kelly Greavy. I stand before you as a caring private citizen of this community, as well as the founder of Manistee Proud, which is a volunteer group with its sole mission being to beautify the area in which we live and to have pride in our hometown. I was born and raised in Manistee. I had the best childhood a kid could ever ask for. Our family was blessed to be surrounded by grandparents, aunts, uncles, and cousins all lived here. My lineage here runs deep and wide. I love Manistee and all the beautiful memories it has given me. Manistee to me is a beautiful little storybook town where a cup of sugar is borrowed rather than bought. And although we rarely see clothes drying on the line these days, that feel is still blowing in the wind. Standing in line at our local bakery catching up with neighbors and friends or striking up a conversation with someone we've never met before, it's that kind of quality that makes this town so special and endearing. This is the beauty that we all see. Unfortunately, the condition of our surroundings do not match that feel. It deeply saddens me to see areas of my hometown that have given me so much as a child and as a young adult feel so neglected and run down today. It also pains me to say that I even feel a sense of embarrassment. Manistee suffered a recession in the early 1980s. So many lost their jobs, including my dad, sadly ended up needing to relocate for work. My husband, myself, and our two children moved away in the late 1990s because of the hopelessness that still persisted. Many friends and family members have also moved away due to the melancholy that they too felt while residing here. We've moved back and sadly that same feeling that we left so many years ago is still palpable today. And the question is why? We can, why can we live and visit so many different places that are just like Manistee, that are progressive and beautifully maintained, but Manistee is still not functioning the way other cities do? We don't understand, and personally, it hurts my heart because this is truly home. This isn't a negative rant, it's a factual and realistic observation. How do you fix what needs fixing if you're always looking through rose colored glasses? Yes, there is beauty and charm here, and our natural resources are breathtaking and certainly not to be taken for granted, but the dirt, decay, and despair which emulates into sadness unfortunately outweighs those positives. The state of our landscapes affects what businesses want to invest here. It affects the quality of healthcare professionals that wish to practice here. It affects the number of tourists that want to lodge, dine, and spend their retail dollars here. It affects the welfare of our entire community here, and it ultimately affects who we become as a person here. I'm not blaming any one individual, I'm blaming the system. We all play a role whether we are a government official, a private business owner, or a private citizen. We all need to be held accountable. We all need to do our part. We all need to look at what is ours and be responsible and respectful to ourselves as well as to our fellow community members. We need a progressive plan with goals and completion dates to help create the vision that we all see from Manistee. We need someone we can call on for areas of improvement that will listen to us and take our concerns and ideas seriously. And we need good leadership to help us reach those goals. How many more times do we have to walk an area pointing out its insufficiencies? How many more pictures do we need to take to prove our point? How many more complaints do we need to hear? It feels as if no one is listening. This community has had enough. We are tired of the excuses. We are outraged and we want better. We demand better. And what about pride? Where has it gone? Pride is a direct correlation to oneself. It is our dignity. It is our self-worth. It has a positive emotional response. It affects us emotionally, mentally, physically, spiritually, and financially. It affects how we are inspired. It affects our motivation. It affects how we view people and things. Without it, it makes us negative when we otherwise would not be. So we stand here before you today, the leaders of this community, asking you to please set strict rules and regulations that are long overdue and to follow through. We need you to lead as an example for us to be inspired by. We need you to know that we deserve better. Manistee deserves better. We are asking for a sound commitment from all of you today. Thank you.[353.47][353.47](Applause).[354.47][354.47](Applause).
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Yes.[358.47][358.47](Laughter).
Date your name and address and write it in the book there.
Yes. Okay. My name is Frank Tabacca. I live at 605 Broad Avenue. And I just want to kind of echo some of the things that Kelly said and maybe expand on them just a bit. I was born and raised in Manistee. Graduated high school. I like Manistee, okay? But I went away to college, and I was gone for 20 years, living in a lot of different cities in Michigan. I retired in 2013 and I moved back because I like my hometown, and I, my family and friends are here. And I gotta say, having lived in other communities, uh, Manistee doesn't look good, guys. It doesn't. Uh, and what I'm gonna focus on primarily are streets, and two of them in particular, First Street Beach and Memorial Drive. I think First Street Beach, especially in the summertime, is the focal point of Manistee. It really is. It's the gem. And going around the circle, what we call the circle ride, that street's terrible, especially starting by the fish cleaning station going around. I mean, having, let me say some other cities. I like the west coast of Michigan. I really, uh, you go from Grand Haven to Pentwater to Luddington to Frankfurt, Charlevoy, Potoski, Mackinac City, their streets don't look like this, guys. They, it doesn't. It's horrible. I'm embarrassed at the way our streets, the condition they're in. I have people come and visit that don't know Manistee, friends from out of town, and I, I really hate to take them for a ride because it'll just like rattle your teeth right out. And I don't, I don't think it should be like that. I mean, I tried to ride my 10-speed bike over there and bug got, I mean, just shook myself to pieces. I think we can do better than that. A town I really admire is Charlevoy. If you walk downtown Charlevoy, it's beautiful. I like some of the ideas for First Street Beach. I like the Hampton Inn. I like the amphitheater. I think it's gonna be great. I know some people don't like those things because it may change as a sleepy little bedroom town, but that's okay. Hey, we gotta move forward. If you're not moving forward, you're going backward. And I see a lot of things in Manistee and it just doesn't look good. Now, having lived in Luddington for 10 years, and I still work there part-time, they take groups, you guys, they take groups, and they will go to another city and ask that other city, "How are you doing what you're doing?" And I know there's fiscal reasons why. When I bring these things up, people go, "Well, there's no money for these streets," or "We're gonna put sewer in first and all that." That's fine, but you gotta do something about the circle around First Street. It can be so much better. And Memorial Drive, that, that's, that shows the River Walk and the backside to River Street community, the stores, and that street is horrendous. I'm waiting, Josh, to get pulled over because when I, when I'm heading out, I go on the other's lane. I mean, you can't go in those. It's just, it'll just tear your car to pieces. And I just gotta believe there's some way to do something about that that you could find at least, and not just cold patches, that doesn't do it. There's huge holes and stuff. Like I say, going around First Street should be just one fun, enjoyable, nice cruise. If you go into Luddington from about Jabavi all the way to Sterns Park, the road is, they've redone it, it's beautiful. Sterns Park is beautiful. I think First Street Beach should look like that. And there are ways that, that it gets done. So anyway, I'm just, I don't wanna be a, I hate to be a complainer, I try to be positive, but it's just embarrassing. I think the roads are atrocious, and there's gotta be some way, you know, when you're coming down First Street like that approaching, you look out this coast guard, that's pretty. And why can't the streets continue to be nice all the way around? You know, it's almost like that thing forms a heart, right? When you go around the beach like that, it should be, it should be just, it should be the centerpiece. So anyway, I'm just thinking that something could be done. Maybe it's gonna take some innovative thinking, and that's maybe what we need to find out how other communities are doing. I don't think the cities up north or anything have any more industry or anything than we do. I'm surprised that Charlevoy can do what it does. Um, so anyway, I know I'm probably gonna about run out of time. Let me give you a silly analogy I tell people about the streets look to me. If you had a beautiful house in a nice place, but it rained there every day, and if that beautiful house's roof developed a leak, you would find some way to fix it, right? You wouldn't let it just continue to leak. We've gotta find the money or something, some way to fix it and make Manistee. You know what? Maybe we are the hidden gem on the lake shore, I don't know. But it's, it's a nice little town, but it doesn't look as good as it can. So, anyway, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.[664.23][664.23](Applause). Anybody else?[666.23][666.23](Pause).
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Sue Franklin, Susan Franklin. I reside at 580 Browning Avenue in the city. I am a city resident and have been for 34 years. And prior to that, I've been a resident of Manistee Township since 1973. I'm here this evening as a city resident who appreciates the work of city leadership and the employees who provide the services that make this city the place I call home. I'm fortunate to see the beautiful natural resources around such as the beaches of Lake Michigan, the numerous parks to either relax or play sports in, and the river channel connecting two bodies of water so distinctive to our area when I walk daily, and I do walk daily. My walks frequently include the River Walk, which we publicize to our visitors as the homepage of our city. However, if you walk it, you will see that insufficient maintenance is obvious. Cleaning, weeding, foliage trimming and replacement, in addition to some safety issues, need to be addressed by you, the city council. The River Walk is a highlight of our city. Please look at the importance of improving its current state as a priority. But the maintenance of public areas is not just for you and for me. If we aspire to increase tourism, we need to improve and maintain the areas that our guests see. We want them to see a well-kept city. We want them to return, and they only get that first impression, and if it's not a good one, they're not coming back. So I ask you to put into place some necessary action to raise that bar of excellence, to raise it to a higher standard. Thank you for the privilege to present my concerns to you this evening.
Thank you.[794.12][794.12](Applause). Anybody else?[796.12][796.12](Pause).
Hi, my name is Diane Knapp, and I live at 318 River Street and a Half. And I first want to thank Kelly and her group for the, uh, the countless hours that she has spent out on the River Walk. I've personally seen her spend amazing amount of time, and she's doing a wonderful job. And as a community member, I'm greatly appreciative of that. And I've only lived here for about five years, and when, and when we first moved here, I was concerned about the River Walk because I thought it needed a great deal of maintenance. So I took on the River Walk next to where we live. We live actually overlooking the river. And I would call and find, and wanna know who is responsible for maintaining the river, and I would get like, well, this committee or this person. So I never got a straight answer. And what I've found over the five years, nothing has changed. It's, remains the same. I mean, um, there's overgrowth. I actually walked the River Walk this morning, and the handicap ramp is leaning, which is very unsafe, plus you have overgrowth, so you have to go around. And I know there's something to do with some kind of species that needs to be taken out a special way, but that's been like that for three years, and it hasn't changed. And, um, it's very slippery. It was wet today, and it's extremely slippily, slippery where the trees overgrow. And so that's a real concern that should be for everyone that lives in the community because someone could definitely get hurt. And, you know, when I talked to Kelly earlier, she said that, you know, she didn't want it to be a negative meeting or, or anything, but the fact of the matter is, there's, there's facts that, that are negative and that need to be addressed, and someone needs to be accountable for that River Walk so that when we have a concern as community members, that we have someone that we can go to that is gonna be accountable to making sure that gets that done. Because like I've said, in five years, I haven't seen that change. So I'm hoping that by people stepping up here and addressing their concerns, because I feel like everyone else that's been up here, it's, it's quite, it's embarrassing. You know, we have this beautiful River Walk, people that have given an easement for that River Walk to, so all community members can enjoy it. So I really feel like, um, that it's time for someone to be accountable for that, that River Walk. So that's kind of my concern. So, thank you for your time.[965.12][965.12](Applause).
My name is Nicole Pierce. I own the Fillmore at 318 River Street, and I live at 434 Elm Street. And I, Kelly's group is doing an amazing job. Like, she's had volunteers from Seeds la, was it last week? Yes, last week. And they're doing an amazing job, but it's not solely her responsibility. Like, the building that the Fillmore resides in pays $10,000 a year in taxes. I know that myself and other business owners and building owners on that street pay for it to look better than it looks. I know there's a DDA contract, I don't know the specifics about it, but if that DDA contract was held by a private individual, a private company, it would not look that way. So the fact that the city is responsible for said contract, it needs to be enforced. It's no different than the trash problem we've had here. The lack of enforcement, the lack of pride within the city is an issue, and until it's corrected, I'll be quite frankly honest with you, there are many moments that I would love to sell my business, and my husband and my boys and I would leave because I feel really unsupported. You look at the River Walk and it looks dilapidated, like, does anybody go there? And that's not the only issue. I agree with the gentleman about the First Street Beach. I wholeheartedly am a little bit younger than this guy right here, but I feel...[1062.23][1062.23](Laughter). What I'm saying, what I'm saying is, I feel what he felt when he left with his kids, or when Kelly left with her kids. I totally am right there. I know that you're in a difficult position. I know that there's budgets, but I also know that money is wasted and not spent on where it needs to be spent, like. And there needs to be a higher standard. I 100% agree with all of it. And I think I've heard some rumors of like a bunch of funds floating around coming into the chamber, and so I really think that that, and the DDA or whatever with a grant money, I really feel that you should, if Kelly wants to, you should get with Kelly and have a group, and you should use a lot of the funds on the River Walk. So, that's my piece. Thank you.[1110.83][1110.83](Applause).
Anybody else? Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Kathy Grabowski, and I live at 1235 Cornell Street. And I met Kelly when we were on the same committee here in town, and I knew she had this really good vision for what we could be. And when they started proud of Manistee, Jim and I went down a couple times. It's hard work. I mean, it's very hard work. And, um, the first time, I think, we cleaned kitchen poop. Second time, we planted plants after they pulled all the stuff out of there that was killing them. And you look back when you're leaving, and you notice the difference. And, you know, my father always said, you know, you have to give back. And so I've, we've always wanted to give back to this town. And I was born here, raised here, and someday I'll die here, but not too soon.[1186.49][1186.49](Laughter). And, uh, I, I just think Manistee Proud is the greatest. I mean, you can't look at the before and after pictures and not know it. I mean, they do a section, they take a picture before and a picture after, and it's like night and day. I mean, what they're doing is, is just outstanding, and I think as much support as they can get, they need to have it. Thank you.[1216.23][1216.23](Applause).
Anybody else?
I'm Liz Lasky, 537 Forest Street, Manistee. I too was born here and chose to come back here. And it's an amazing town, and I know I made the right decision. However, the topics touched on tonight, most of them, whether it was roads, whether it was the, uh, River Walk, one of the things that seems that we don't do is preventative maintenance. And we fix the problems, like having a car, you don't wait till the change oil light comes on, you preempt that. And heavens forbid if it went too far and the oil actually drained out of the car, you'd have to replace the whole engine. And in many instances here in Manistee, we're called upon to replace the whole engine. If we'd taken that River Walk and done it in stages, and I saw it happen down in Birmingham, they were resurfing, surfacing a tennis court that was probably maybe eight or 10 years before we would've thought of resurfacing it. And I said to the guy, "Boy, this looks like almost brand new." And he said, "It's cheaper and quicker if you do it before it needs it. We have a program, and this is the year we're gonna do it. Maybe the winters weren't so bad the last few winters, maybe we're a little early on it, but it's gonna save us money in the long run." And a week later, I'm walking by, and our courts are nice, and they're greatly improved, and they're really used a lot more. But I walked over them, and a week after they were laid, there's cracks. And I called and talked with Brandon Prince, or Brandon, yeah, Prince, and a great guy at the DPW, and he said, "Liz, it's the best we're gonna get. The base isn't any good." And he said, "There..." And I said, "Well, it's so much better than it was, but it is, is it as good as it could be and should be?" And I thought, you know, here it is. I don't know how long it'll last when the crack was there a week later. And I look at the courts up at, um, on A Street at Sands Park. I mean, they need to be mowed, and they're not grass courts. I mean, it's not a good look.[1335.66][1335.66](Laughter). And I thought, so much of it could just be if we just had preventative maintenance and kept things, like we're patching roads, and that's almost a full-time job here. And I know you just can't go out and replace all the roads, but if we did more, I think, upkeep as we went along. And this is, there's a lot in the city. We offer a lot, and it can't be all left up to whether it's the council, the DPW, it can't be left up. It takes an effort. And when you look at, the other night, if you caught in on the news after the Cherry Festival, and they had that open space, and you looked at the trash, and you thought, "Well, they're lucky to get that cleaned up by Labor Day." They called in the troops, which were local citizens, and it was cleaned up. The next day you went by there, and it was like they'd never had a festival. And it was for the volunteers that came in. You go to a college stadium, and when you're walking out, you're thinking, "Boy, I hope they can have a game next week because there's so much trash in the stands." That night, it's cleaned up, and by Sunday morning, you could take a church group there, it's so clean. So I thought, we gotta embrace the volunteers, and it can, has to be, you know, a work, it's everybody's in this together, we all want the same goals, there's nobody, you wouldn't be sitting on that council, nobody'd be employed by the city if they didn't have their heart in this and think, "We can make this better." So I think that we can, and I think we have to do it together. Thanks.[1420.83][1420.83](Applause).
Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Del Knapp. I live at 318 and a Half River Street. I own a commercial building downtown. Um, I'm just gonna make it real, real quick because I'm, I wanna thank Kelly, you know, for all you've done, and the, and the, the people that are up here addressing their concerns, I think are real. Um, I've been on the River Walk a lot, and I see what they're seeing. I see the ramp, and it is embarrassing. It's embarrassing because I think there's a liability behind it as well. And if you have to let it go to that point where you're concerned about a liability, it's just, it is ridiculous, in my opinion. And what I wanna draw attention to is the safety issues that are going on. Let's just, let's, we already heard about the River Walk, so let's, you know, the sidewalks out front, out in front of, of the restaurant that we own, that, that were improved at one time, there are paver blocks, and they've been washed out completely. So we bought red cones to put in the holes so that people wouldn't fall. And I'm not making it up, I've seen people fall on that sidewalk, but now they steal the red cones. So we bought two red cones, they steal them at night, and the hole in the sidewalk is just there now again. The other issue I wanna say something about is the speed on that road. Because I asked about three years ago, every other town that you go to that's, you know, that a lot of foot traffic and that, there's these little, it says, you know, "State law, stop, slow down in the crossings." I asked about those three years ago, someone said, "Oh, we have those, but they're not, I don't, they're not in town." Every single town that you go to has those in the crosswalk, and it helps to slow traffic down. And traffic is really, really fast down that road. It's ridiculous. So, um, I, I don't know. I think there's some current concerns that need to be addressed, and, um, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm willing to, you know, do my part, and I'm just asking you guys to do your part. Thank you.
Thank you.[1534.12][1534.12](Applause). Anybody else? Yes?
My name is Eve Schleifli. I live at 262 Lighthouse Landing, Lighthouse Landings. And one of my concerns, I agree, I want to first say thank you so much, Kelly. Second of all, one of my concerns, which I have written numerous letters to the city manager and to Jeff McCula, I don't understand why the north sand dune of First Street Beach at the lower parking lot looks the way it does. There is so much human erosion and environmental erosion there. Why do we keep paying for the heavy equipment to come down, scoop it all up, and remove it? So I went down there one morning, and I stopped a big heavy equipment machine. And I said, "Could you please tell me where you're taking this virgin beach sand?" "To the dump." I said, "What? Why aren't you just putting it back?" He didn't answer. I don't know if it's a true story, I'm telling what I was told. I have written letters asking that we have black cap farm right here in Oneckama with numerous varieties of seagrass, dune grass, jute grass, black grass. Why don't we take this, I've seen it done so often in the Carolinas, I was born and raised here as well, third generation, and plug that north dune with grass so it can take and we don't have the blow and all the sand coming down in that parking lot? I live right there. I walk it every day. I see the heavy equipment down there all week long, and they continually have to sweep and scoop and sweep and remove. Something's wrong there in my heart. I'm, I'm very bittersweet about it. And the other thing I don't like down there is the heavy equipment riding on the shoulder of the, the street and off the shoulder, scooping up part of the sand dune, going around, because they break up the black tar, if you will, road. And big chunks of the black are pushed down into the virgin sand, and so we have like, you know, a rock sand rather than a smooth, grainy, nice beach sand. Don't we have equipment that can come down there and clean out all that black stone? Many of my neighbors don't like it as well. I'm here...
So I went down there one morning and I stopped a big heavy equipment machine. And I said, could you please tell me where you're taking this virgin beach sand? To the dump. I said, what? Why aren't you just putting it back? He didn't answer. I don't know if it's a true story, I'm telling what I was told. I have written letters asking that we have black cap farm right here in Onekama with numerous varieties of seagrass, dune grass, juniper grass, black grass. Why don't we take this, I've seen it done so often in the Carolinas, I was born and raised here as well, third generation, and plug that north dune with grass so it can take and we don't have the blow and all the sand coming down in that parking lot? I live right there, I walk it every day. I see the heavy equipment down there all week long. And they continually have to sweep and scoop and sweep and remove. Something's wrong there in my heart. I'm, I'm very bittersweet about it. And the other thing I don't like down there is the heavy equipment riding on the shoulder of the, the street and off the shoulder, scooping up part of the sand dune, going around, because they break up the black tar, if you will, road. And big chunks of the black are pushed down into the virgin sand. And so we have like, you know, a rock sand rather than a smooth, grainy, nice beach sand. Don't we have equipment that can come down there and clean out all that black stone? Many of my neighbors don't like it as well, I'm here representing them. And could we please get it where the equipment cannot get off the shoulder to break it up more? And have, why can't they take the same entrance down to that lower parking lot as we do, the residents? Then we wouldn't have all that breaking up and that, uh, negative visual, visual of it. Uh, I have been on the boardwalk many a times, the River Walk. It is beautiful. I love that place. But there's many areas that are dry rotted that needs, the boards need to be replaced. Uh, and again, yes, it is very slippery. It's sometimes it has just a glaze of green moss on it. Something needs to be done, and I hope all of you will think positive, move ahead, listen to the residents who have lived here for a long time, pay big taxes to live here, and do something about what all of these kind people have addressed this evening. Thank you.
You don't even have to ask, just put it in line. Thank you.
Uh, hi, my name is Alyssa Lasky and I'm a resident at 505 Fourth Street, just a block and a half down from my parents. Uh, I wasn't planning on making any comments tonight, but I felt compelled just to say a little something. So I was born and raised in Manistee. I left for college, graduated in 2006, left for college, went to Michigan State, Go Green, and then have spent, uh, the last 14, 15 years downstate. Uh, I moved, I'm a northern Michigan girl at heart. I happened to work in software, so I had the opportunity to work remote and made the leap, uh, back last year to sell my house downstate and move back home. I was lucky enough to find, find a house so close to my parents, which is in the city limits. Um, so the town that I moved from, a little town called Birmingham, Michigan, it's in the metro Detroit area. I purchased a home, uh, back in 2014, so it was there six or seven years. And my city taxes for Birmingham, well, I thought they were high, but they're actually less mils than here, so, uh, but nevertheless, it's the only tax bill that I never mind paying. And that's not really even a joke, so then like, like, why? Why, why didn't you mind writing that check? They did such a good job with my money, and you could see it. You could see it everywhere you looked. The streets were swept regularly, not, you know, just once every couple of months. The parks were mowed and edged, garbages were emptied regularly, rules were intentionally designed to keep the city beautiful, and the citizens were held accountable through regular enforcement. Sidewalks were maintained, public gardens were kept weed-free, I mean, truly, I could go on and on and on. Um, so my return to, back to Manistee, I'm so glad to be here. I, I believe that there's no, there's, uh, we're, we have unparalleled beauty here in Manistee, and I'm beyond thankful that I can be back here, really glad to be back here, and I don't plan on leaving. Uh, that being said, uh, it was a little disheartening to come back and things looked worn down. And I guess I'm saying that as someone who's been gone for 15-plus years and came home maybe a couple of weeks a year, but really it was a quick in and out to see my parents, things just look rundown here. And instead of kind of focus, focusing on or, you know, maybe going through some of the observations I have, I, I just wanna say four more things. Number one, there are some things I, I learned while I, I was fortunate enough to be able to live in Birmingham. Number one, maintenance matters, and it goes a long way. Rules and enforcement of those rules matter, and that goes a long way. And likewise, pride goes a long way. It's not just about having budget and this pride. Pride by our city, pride by our citizens. And I am, in closing, so darn encouraged that this is what we're here talking about tonight, that so many people are getting involved in Manistee Proud, and that there seems to be this movement that people are starting to realize, oh, you know what, it could be better. And I am so thankful, I'm so encouraged, and I'm so looking forward to things getting better because they can and they need to, and I'm really happy to be a part of it. And that's all I have.
Is there anybody else?
Hi, I'm Shelley Doyan. I own The Ideal Kitchen downtown 421 River Street. And, um, I agree with so much everyone has said. I and my family were a transplant, so we came here 21 years ago and went, ooh, cool town, um, and fell in love with it immediately. And, um, and that's why we decided to invest in our community. And, um, that's why, um, I'm so excited about Manistee Proud, is because, um, the people that are involved in that are stepping up to invest in their community. I know I'm preaching to the choir, there's a lot of business owners here, there's a lot of people that volunteer, whether it's for organizations, hospitals, you know, um, schools, everything. Everyone is investing their own kind of time, um, donating, tithing, sitting on boards, you know, and supporting our local businesses. Sometimes I think we have to step back and, um, say, what, look in the mirror and go, what am I doing? Whether it's in my job, whether it's in my business, whether it's doing whatever, what am I doing to invest in my community to make it better? Better for me, better for my grandchildren, better for people that come here. So, um, I'm just really thankful that Kelly stepped up and, and started doing that. And, um, no matter what, how we invest, and everybody has their own strengths, it's gonna make a difference. And I think, um, I guess I'm just encouraging everyone to work together for the betterment of our community because, um, you know, we're growing, people are totally noticing it. I'm at my business every day. People come in and go, wow, the college, wow, this, you got two new stores, four more stores. And people are noticing it. And, um, and I do agree, there's, and I gotta say, my benches are sad outside our stores. They're really, really sad. And, um, and I've actually had a couple of customers come in and go, I snagged my dress on your bench. And I'm like, ooh, let's hurry. And so, um, we were gonna actually be taking care of that. I know Oscar and Karen from, um, surroundings did last year, and, and, um, I was talking to Oscar and he's like, doggone it, I didn't get that doggone done painted, um, bench back. But anyway, so I just want, um, everybody to remember, love where you live, invest in our community, and we need to just work together, and we'll get it done and it will be spectacular. Thanks.
Last call, anybody else? Okay, we're gonna move on to the work session items. Discussion on parking boats and campers in the city coun- the city, um, council member Bachman.
I brought this up because it, it's something that's near and dear to my heart, and Chief Glass had some thoughts on it, um, a few weeks ago when we talked about it, and I'd asked him to consider his thoughts and maybe bring them back and give us some idea where he's at on Long Forkin' side, maybe it comes to some consensus based on what he's got to say.
Certainly. It's a tough act to follow, but I'll give my best. Um, so currently, our practice of the police department is this, is, is when it comes to RVs and boats parked on the road, if it's licensed, insured, if it's not some type of public hazard, if it's not blocking the sidewalk, we don't really allocate resources to it. Rather, we take our resources and we, we focus them on boats and RVs and vehicles that are blighted, that are run down, that are, that are not licensed. So that's kind of where our efforts are focused on. Um, so I think it's important to know as far as, is how we do our enforcement efforts on our current zoning statute.
Current law, however, doesn't support that, correct? The current law is a little bit more restrictive than that, correct?
Correct. So that's contrary to what the current, I'll call it an ordinance is. So if council chooses to, to, to match it with our efforts or, or what it might be, but currently, it's, it's, you know, RVs can be parked on the road for 48 hours, you can't have a boat in your driveway for more than 21 days, uh, as well as RVs. So it's kind of a deep dive, it's, it's a pretty lengthy statute, and our enforcement efforts don't match that. Again, we're focused on our efforts on more of a light.
And I firstly think that's the way we should be doing it, but as you know, I got a visit because my camper was parked outside. So clearly, that's not been the, I mean, you've done it differently. Um, so I would like for city council and the citizens to tell you that we support that theory. If it's causing a problem, if people complain, if it's not licensed, if it's broke down, you should deal with that. Um, I like that, thinking I'd like to make that a policy issue for the police department, firstly.
Okay. Any thoughts, council members?
Well, Josh, I'll tell you, when I was on 30 years ago, and there was a previous chief that used to park his boat for months, and I made him move that damn thing. I said, you know better than the rest of us. So, uh, he was mad at me and I didn't care, so I gave him a ticket if he wouldn't have. And so, you know, I, I think that moving them off the street is a good idea, whether they run or not. And, you know, I don't care if they park them in the backyard, as long as they're licensed, like Dave said, and they're runnable, put them in the backyard.
I think you're referring to vehicles parked on the street, are you not?
Right.
The ordinance covers both, on the street and in your private property and you off the road. I'm personally concerned about the ability to park a boat on the street for more than 48 hours without having to worry about getting knocked out of that corner.
And if I could add, and, and, um, you can interpret if you want to, but in the city of Manistee, we're very restricted on where we can park our RVs, boats, trailers, necessarily, you might not necessarily be able to park in your backyard. Again, Zach from Zoning walked me through where you could park, and it's, it's a deeper dive than I thought it was. So I'm not sure that matches our enforcement actions and what council's direction would be on that.
Well, my concern is the streets are so narrow, and when you have a boat that's pretty big or a trailer, it's hard to get past that, even like one car. So if, you know, we can't choose, if one street is wider than the other, that's not playing favorites of, well, you live on a street that's wider, well, my street's not as wide, so that's really, I didn't pick that street because it's wide.
And in some of those streets, I know that we have made them no parking on one side of the street until it's alternate parking to allow you to park something on the street until you get a fire truck down there. There's a number of streets that have no parking on one side during the summer, and then it goes away in alternate parking, you can park on either side during alternate parking. I, I'm thinking of, um, down by the fire department, those streets in there that are, that are narrow, we have done that over the years. I don't know if that's still a situation that you do, but we have in the past. Taking those narrow streets and posting no parking on one side during the summer and having alternate parking, probably make, take the no parking signs down and allow people to park alternate parking so you always have space on the street on one side.
Mr. Bradford, would it be possible to work with the city chief, police chief, to come up with an ordinance that reflects what they're actually doing? Does that make any sense?
I, I have a, you know, again, one of the things that kind of troubles me, because when I saw this, we don't have one street that's alike in our town. Every street is a little bit different. And, and my concern is that in some areas, when you park your boat in the street or your RV in the street, you're now taking the parking space away from people who live in that neighborhood. Uh, and, and again, it's not like they're just gonna be there and then the next day I'll be able to park in front of my house again. It's for those long durations. So if we don't have those kind of limits, there are a lot of places in Manistee, really, you gotta look at your, your neighbor and how that boat or that RV is impacting their quality of life and their ability to be able to, to take the kid out of the car seat and, and get into the house or load, unload the groceries. The other thing that I have an issue with, and, and I see it, and I should probably be more, uh, aggressive in, in letting law enforcement know when I see it, is when you see the extension cord going out from the RV into their, you know, into their house. I mean, you know, one would assume they may be living there, just, just saying. Uh, and, and that's probably not what we want. And again, you, you get into that, well, it's okay if it's, if it's a $150,000 RV, but it's not okay if it's a, you know, rickety old thing on the back of a truck. Well, we've, we're not, we can't make those kind of judgments. So those are the things that I have concerns with when we start kind of making it easier to do those things. I think we, we have to make sure that we really kind of look at our neighbors and how, uh, boats and trailers and, uh, RVs impact the neighborhoods. And so I, I'm not quite sure that I'm, uh, real excited about having, and I kind of, and I'm not, not saying that your philosophy, it doesn't work, because it probably does. I mean, you're, you're, you're attacking issues when they come up, when they're, when they're having an impact on neighborhoods, so.
It's pretty much, I, I think we need to govern with common sense.
And, and the, the problem is, is that it's very difficult to make an ordinance that is.
I'm not even suggesting, I'm not even suggesting we make any more, we have plenty of ordinances that cover this. What I, what I, I don't, I don't even wanna look at another ordinance. What I'm suggesting is, the chief needs to, to use his resources to the best of their use and use common sense when deciding. If, if, um, someone's got a camper that's blocking the street or blocking neighbors' access, if neighbors call and say, it's impacting my ability, whatever, he should deal with that. I, I think that, I, I, I think we need to govern with common sense.
Yep. I, I agree. And, and like I said, for me, one of my person, I do a lot of walking as well, is when the boat parked across the sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, and then that means that I have to go out into the road, uh.
Oh, big time.
And, and it's not, you know, again, I.
I'm a little passionate about, I mean, when I, when I bought my house, Oxford Court was not paid very well, had no curb, no gutters. I asked the city to, to put curbs and gutters on all of our streets when we rebuilt them. They said no. I went to my neighbor, Doc Lindor, petitioned city council, and we paid a special assessment for years to have curb and gutter on our street to make it better for all of us. And I, I, I don't know, I'd just like to be able to use it, and I'd like to be able to think that anybody in front of their house can use it with common sense.
So if I hear you're right, you're saying selective enforcement is okay? If I hear you correctly, you're saying selective enforcement is okay?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Selective enforcement happens every day.
I have a question. Did you say that it, it was?
Every police officer, every day, does selective enforcement on how they.
You said that it's, has to be, like, it can only be in your driveway for 21 days?
Uh, correct. As far as boats and RVs, they're only, they can't be in your driveway for more than 21 days.
Okay, so if you have a driveway, can't we just change it to where you can have your camper for the season? I, I don't, I've never camped in my life, so I don't know what, you know, if it's parked in your driveway, then you don't have to move it every 21 days, you can have it there for the season. But the roads, you have to move it, you know, because like Mick said, it's gonna take up parking from everybody else. I mean, you're gonna go out there every 21 days and tell people to move a camper from their driveway to the road and then back?
Yeah, I think what you're talking about, council member Sullivan, is like amendment to the ordinance, or, or if I'm hearing that just how we enforce it, I guess I'm looking to see if, if council wants to amend the ordinance, if, if they're okay with how we're enforcing it.
I don't like selective enforcement. I go right ahead and tell you that right now. I don't, I, I don't like that. I think it's, it needs to be fair across the board.
Do you, do you know of any ordinance other than homicide that's enforced fair across the board? Clearly drunk, nothing is, is universally, it's right and wrong. The world is not, and again, I don't care about the campers, but I'm, you, you don't go out every day. You don't write a ticket for every guy you stop. Every person is driving one over the speed limit, rolls a stop sign, you do selective enforcement based on how you feel that that person can respond to the enforcement that you do.
Our officers use discretion.
Absolutely, every day.
But you do stop them and you do say something.
Right. And for me, this issue's more of a resource allocation issue versus selective enforcement. Where, where do we focus our efforts as a police department? Do we focus them on the, uh, campers that are on the road, or do we focus it on different things? And right now, we're focusing on, on a major priority for us, which is blight, so.
And, and I know that there's some cities, and, and actually our military bases, campers and boats aren't allowed, period. You, you put them in a boat or a camp wot, and then you check them out when you need them, uh, they, they're never on the streets. And I think, isn't it, Frankfurt, I think, has an ordinance that basically says that, you know, boats and, boats and campers aren't allowed on the street except overnight.
Right.
So, I mean, uh.
So what are your wishes, council? Do you wanna just?
I, I guess I'm lost on what you actually want to do.
I'm more in favor of them not parking on the street because, well, first of all, I don't even have sidewalks where I am. So there's no place to walk on the sidewalks, it's a very narrow street, there's narrow So there's no place to walk on the sidewalks, it's a very narrow street, there's narrow streets throughout the north side, and it's, it's been a great place for people to walk, you know, I, we've got a group of people that walk like a dozen dogs at one time, down the middle of the street, because there's no place else to walk. And when you have vehicles parked on both sides, and you had a camper or a boat or something out there, there's no clear visibility for people even backing out of their driveways in some instances. So I, I've heard complaints about that. And I'm a little bit concerned, I, I guess if I had to just say, I'd just rather have them park on their own property, on their driveways, and I don't have a.
I'd rather prevent that.
In, in a lot of situations, you can't park on your own property. That's kind of what we're talking about, as far as front yard versus side yard versus backyard, and what is storage. And again, it's a deep dive, and I don't wanna get too far in the weeds, but you can park your vehicle, or your RV, in the driveway, if the driveway's in front of your house, but if it's on the side of the house, it can't break the plane. Again, I went with Zach, and we spent thirty minutes of my life going into what exactly, so we know, so, so our officers exactly know what the letter of law is, and how to enforce it. And so I would venture to guess that over half the city residents don't understand the zoning, zoning ordinance, and probably aren't in compliance with it.
Mayor.
It's a little deeper than, than, than most people know. That's what we found.
Mayor.
Yes. Mike and Zach are here from the planning department, and I think they have a couple of comments that they'd like to interject into the discussion.
I didn't see them back there. Come on, Mike. Or Zach. Or whoever.
So before, you know, I guess we might take a deep dive into it. There's, there's a little bit of difference between, I guess, what we're talking about here, so where there's police power ordinances, there's the zoning ordinance. There is a way to amend the zoning ordinance. If you're looking to amend it, usually you do through a public hearing council, probably shouldn't be making a decision tonight on what they, they wish to do. The, the correct process would probably be to tell the planning commission to develop different language if council wishes to try to amend the ordinance. There's also a section two-ten of the Planning and Zoning Enabling Act, which basically outlines that if two ordinances are contradicting each other, the zoning ordinance takes precedence. So, um, that's state law. So if you guys were to make something that contradicts through a police power ordinance, the zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinance would be in effect, so you, you essentially have to change both of those. So I just wanted to, before we really get into it, if you want to, about what, what is allowed and what isn't allowed currently, I just wanted to come up and say that before, before we went really into, into any deeper. I don't think that council should make a decision tonight, but maybe if they wish to address this in a different manner, would be to, to tell the planning commission to amend some language, or to work on some language that might appease them. Now, direction on that would be preferable. You know, I've heard tonight that you seem to not want people on the streets, which the current zoning ordinance doesn't allow for over a forty-eight hour period, but it does restrict you to twenty-one days in your own driveway, and it does not allow you to park in your front lawn. So a simple, a simple fix of that, if, if so desired, would be to amend it to, yeah, would be to allow for a, a longer period of time within your front yard, or even a timeframe. And then you're allowed to park it in your side or rear yard, but you do have to meet setbacks of three and five feet, so rear yard's five feet, three yards from your side, so you're not crou, encroaching on your neighbor. Yeah, three feet, I'm sorry. And then, and on the roads, there's, there's multiple violations if they're parking on the roads for over a forty-eight hour period, one of which is storing a building, or storing a temporary dwelling, if it is an RV, within, you have to have seven feet of clearance around it at all time, including your, your side or your rear yard. So there's, there's quite a few things that would be in violation, that would need to be amended, and, you know, before we, you know, really got too deep in. So if that's the direction, you know, that's kind of what we would suggest, if that's what you guys are thinking of. With saying that, you know, we'll take questions.
Council, do you have any questions, or what are your wishes? What do you want to do with this?
So I'm okay with the forty-eight hours on the streets. I would like that you could park your RV, your boat, on your driveway, and your side yard, and your, any yard for longer than twenty-one days, because it's your property.
Yeah, we could get a comparison between our ordinance, and say, Luddington's ordinance, or Frankfurt's ordinance. I mean, they have the same problems, I would think, so.
Yeah, I mean, some, some of the things that you guys are walking on is, is the zoning ordinance has to tackle a lot of different things. So one of your doing is like temporary storage structures, temporary dwellings, the parking of RVs, recreational vehicles. So there's a lot of different things that, that cover these areas, and then they kind of all encompass each other. In fact, one of them kind of contradicts itself, saying, hey, you can park twenty-one days within your front yard, but the other one says your, or forty-eight hours in your front yard, but then twenty-one days in your driveway. So it's more restrictive on, on some, in some aspects. So, yeah, we can, we can put together some language. We typically work with the planning commission to do so, so I mean, that's, that's again where I would recommend it goes to, for development of this language, to bring back to council to say, hey, you know, this is where we went with it. I don't think this is a, a large haul, as far as, as fixing it to whatever you guys deem that you wanna do, or not do, but it is something that we can look at.
Is that okay with council?
And you would require a public hearing, so obviously the public could have their input on that matter as well.
I think it's a good idea. I wouldn't take away the forty-eight hours, it gives you a chance to wash your camper, put it away.
Yeah.
Put your food in, we can go camping. Forty-eight hours is not an unreasonable amount of time to do that.
Right.
Anyway.
Is that the direction council wants to go?
The planning.
Yep, okay. You, you got your marching orders?
Yeah, so, so just so we understand it, it is, you guys would like to extend the amount of time in a driveway, or no, or just do a comparison?
I think it's, explore what are, what are some of the other options?
Okay.
And, you know, what are some of the other communities doing?
Okay.
So we have a better idea, because, you know, there's always a, you know, a consequence. So if we make it longer.
Is there a limit on the, in the ordinance, like, if you can't have five campers in a boat?
Yeah, there is, so you actually have an unlimited amount within your side and rear yard for your own personal use, but you can only store a friend's one, one boat.
Okay, so I think that's an issue, because there's quite a few houses that have, you know, a camper, a trailer, a boat, a camper, you know, something under a tarp, and whatnot.
Right.
That needs to be addressed.
I mean, so we would take it as a, as complaint basis, but then again, we would turn it over to the police department for enforcement, so it's kind of.
Add that language in there, to where.
If you want to restrict that further, we could, but.
Well, I think it needs to be, because then it falls into the, the blight, right? If it's, you know.
Right, you, you're basically operating a storage facility, saying that you own all of them.
Exactly.
So, yeah, that is typical. You see that in a Neckama township, where they allow you to store one boat and one RV, and then, you know, you may be able to store one boat and one RV from another. There's other ones that are more restrictive, that say, one only of the, her person that owns it, and they have to provide proof of that.
Yeah, I think it's the one and one, like a boat and a RV, or.
Okay, and that's something we can, we can take through the planning commission and see what they bring back to you, because that would go through the public hearing.
Okay.
Council happy with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, yes.
We're moving on to discussion on parking boats and camper, no, we're moving on to discussion on the city participation with Manistee Proud. Public Works Director Jeff McCula and Kelly.
Thank you, council. I think a lot of the public comments that you heard tonight support the, the message that I wanted to bring forward. The work that Manistee Proud's been doing on the River Walk is way beyond just a volunteer effort. And, and I've talked with Kelly numerous times, her vision is, is to beautify the community. The work that they're doing is having an amazing impact, and it's really showing. And with all the discussion, all the notoriety, the publications, you know, it's really been created attention for the community as a whole. We have worked with volunteer groups for years and years, but those are disappearing faster than they're appearing to us. We're, everybody that's been a part of a service club understands that the numbers are dwindling, some of the clubs are aging, some of them are disappearing and closing, and the community doesn't have that support that it used to have. But we still have the fifteen parks that we need to maintain. And so with all this attention and, and the results that we're getting, I thought this was a, just a good opportunity to, for council to understand that, when I'm meeting with the DDA Design Committee, when I'm meeting with residents, when we're talking with the Chamber of Commerce, and I've had individual conversations with city council members, the Parks Commission as a whole, and last night was the first meeting I attended of the, the Tree Commission that has a lot of new members, there's, there's a change that's happening in the community, and I think that there's not, I wanna say this properly, but people want more. You can rate our parks or our public spaces on what, whatever scale you want. Say it's a one to ten, you may say it's a six, somebody may say it's an eight. I think we're at a seven. In my job, we never can hit the limit, we have to always keep pushing and pushing. But I think the community as a whole, and what I'm hearing everywhere around us, is whatever level we're at, we need to take it to a, a higher level. And, and honestly, we have tried, within the public works, to extend and extend, and try to use our resources, try to invest in different equipment, try to invest in different prioritizations, but I think we're pretty maxed out on what our capabilities are. We have absorbed some private contracts. We have two full-time employees that are dedicated to the parks. And we have, years ago, when I took this position, we had five seasonal employees. We've got that up to nine seasonal employees, but they're just not capable of providing that level, that I think what you're hearing from the, the audience tonight. So I tend to agree with them. I think we need to kind of rethink how we're doing it, how we're prioritizing it, how we're funding it. We are trying very hard to match grant money, we're trying very hard to match when we've got developments, and trying to, you know, stretch those dollars as far as we can. A couple comments that I, or just the comments I heard earlier, we do have a plan to pave Harbor Drive, that's been on a transportation improvement plan for, what?
Memorial.
Or Memorial Drive, sorry, for, for probably, what, three, four years? And it's, well, I've talked to, addressed council during both the sessions on that. We just had some preliminary meetings today on a potential way of funding some improvements to the First Street Beach Loop, so we'll hopefully be bringing more on that. When Ms. Lasky was talking about the tennis courts, she's absolutely correct. The Sands Park ones are too far to renovate, they have to be torn out and put back. The renovation we did at First Street Beach, just as an example, those cracks are never gonna go away. They will never go away unless it's rebuilt. And the contractor told us while they were sealing them, this'll last maybe a week, a month, but, but they're there, that's just the base that it's made out of. The pavers downtown that are settling, we're working with the DDA, they know that, you know, the streetscape assets are twenty-one years old now, so they're funding paver improvements, and we're doing those on a block-by-block basis. The yield to pedestrian signs, we're researching how we can get those, I'm trying to get some recessed ones mounted in the streets, so that we can have those signs, but the cars aren't knocking them around and stuff. So a lot of those things are being worked on, but we've got a long ways to go.
Can I say something? So I, I mean this in all due respect, I don't feel like you're maxed out on what you can do, only because I think that you need to hold your guys to a higher standard, just because I've seen with my own, I think that people are talking about just going the extra mile, just a little bit, like, I've seen. Even like on my street, like, they will pick up mine because I called, but they'll drive right past my neighbors because they didn't call. Like, they can just stop and pick it up, you're already right there, like, go the extra mile, like, if you see something that needs to be done, and it's not just with you, like, the DDA needs to step up. They're constantly, I'll call and ask for something, and they're like, oh, well, you gotta call DPW, and I'll call them, and they're like, it's not me. Like, everybody is passing the buck, and nobody's being held accountable, so that's why we're in the position we are, because nobody's, nobody's going the extra mile and stepping up and saying, hey, I, you know, they didn't call me to do this, but let me get this done real quick, you know what I mean? So I think that you, being the head of the DPW, need to step up and hold your guys accountable, and say, hey, you know, just because somebody didn't call, stop and pick it up. That's.
That issue is actually, that's been discussed several times over the years, and it's, I believe it's come to work sessions before. The, the yard waste, we go citywide, and it takes a crew about a day and a half to do that. The brush, the reason why we require the call-in, is because they, we allocate the resources to, to be able to know, is this gonna take a full day, is it two days? So sometimes we'll put a crew out a day earlier, or even have to put them out on a Monday. And it's been debated and debated on, how can we just drive past a pile? And I, the direction that we got from council was, we don't wanna train people not to call, and we don't wanna have to go street by street, so that's, whether that's right or wrong, that's kind of where we're at.
Well, I think it's completely wrong, and I think that everything that everybody brought up is almost falling on your shoulders, to be honest with you, like, it's, it's stuff that the DPW should be doing, and I mean, you got a brush pile this big, you can stop and pick it up. I mean, I'm not talking about a whole forest, where you gotta make a special trip to pick it up.
Jeff, several years ago, once I got.
Jeff, I have a, an issue, well, that I wanna bring up, and that's the Japanese knotweed. I mean, what are we gonna do about that stuff? It's so invasive, it's getting under the boardwalk, it's, it's, you can see it lifting parts of the cement on the, on the River Walk, it's, it's a dangerous, bad species, and I, how are you gonna correct that? I mean, it's, I don't think anything was done last year, I just don't, I just see it overgrown every time I've, I've gone down, and I've helped Kelly a few times, it's in almost every bed that I've weeded, so.
So the, sorry, the, we've been working with the Invasive Species Network, and we've, actually have a council-approved contract, but I think we've been working with them, Ed, you know, five years, six years?
Probably roughly.
At least five years. They did not do any of the treatments last year due to COVID, but they've been, they've been, they've gone the whole River Walk, they sprayed that, they started off on Veterans Oak Grove, Veterans Oak Grove Drive, which, if you go down there, there's a great improvement. And then anywhere else where we see it, or it gets reported to us in the city, we relay that to them, and they treat it.
Well, can you bring them back, because I'm seeing something, because that.
Well, and, yeah, and I've, Kelly and I've had a couple.
It's hanging with the walk, I mean, it's, you're not supposed to cut it down, but somehow it's gotta be removed.
Right. It cannot be removed, it has to be treated and killed in place.
Well, kill it.
Sometimes, if you apply yearly, it can take up to five, six years to kill it. And there's some private properties along the River Walk where we relayed the, the contact information to the property owners, the Invasive Species Network contacted them, quite a few of them approved that treatment, and some of them would not allow that to be treated.
Can they, can they agree we have a noxious weed that shouldn't be there and say they don't want to treat it? We can, can we allow that to stay there, or is there not anything that can tell us that they have to treat it? It seems like.
Well, it's, the only treatment is a chemical treatment.
I understand, yeah, I understand. You done? Are you all done?
I just would like to see some, I'd like to know when they come back, and I'd like to see what they're treating, because I, I, I think I personally need to have a feeling of comfort that it's actually being done. So, and the fact that it's hanging over where people walk, and their, their head can brush right up against it, I mean, I'm a short person, and it's hitting me. So I'm thinking, it's just not right. If you have to walk around something that's hanging over the walk, you don't have a clear path, and that's just not right, so.
I've got a couple of thoughts, and, and, Ed, years ago, we did a public survey, and one of the questions on the survey was, what would the public support a millage for? At the time, the public said they would support a millage for our parks improvements. I don't know if that's something we should revisit someday? The other thing is, the, the First Street Beach Loop, dead on, I mean, it's, part of what we used to have down was a bike loop, we used to have a bike lane, and people could ride their bike down there, and then we were writing tickets in the bike lane, and then all of a sudden, when Mr. Colville came on, he took all the bike lanes away and made it okay to park there because of the concerts were happening on the beach. At some point in time, there needed to be a curb, there needed to be a bike lane, it needed to be paved, you know, all that stuff needed to be okay. I mean, a hundred, everybody in this room, I'm guessing, walks that loop, at some point in time, and there's no walkable spot where people aren't parked.
There's a striped bike lane around the entire loop.
Not anymore.
There is.
It's okay to park it in now.
No, we have parking, we have parking on both sides, and then on the outer, on the outer side of that loop, there's a striped. the outer side of that loop, there's a striped line for that bike lane.
By the parking lot, or by the, by the
It'd be on, well, it depends on where you're at in that loop, but
By around the loop.
It's more on the west side. It used to be on the inside of the loop. Now it's on the outside of
So basically, it's right in the traffic in the parking lane, and I mean, it's
It's all, it's all cracked up.
Yeah, the condition of the pavement, I won't vouch for. That's in bad condition.
The whole thing's a mess in terms of, I've often thought over the years, and I voice these opinions to deaf ears, that someone from the DPW should be assigned every day to the riverwalk to do a daily inspection of the riverwalk and come back and decide what the conditions are that day and what needs to be fixed. You were there. An ivy issue, I think Bob Harper brought it up. We had poison ivy all over the place, and it took a long time to get identified and removed. And that's back, we start talking about, we should have somebody every day that should be, not only just assigned to them, but they should have some authority and responsibility for following up on what they see, not just, oh, there's poison ivy hanging over six feet, come back, ask you if it's okay, take the poison ivy out. They should have some scope of responsibility and authority, that kind of stuff. That's my thought, and I probably have a bunch of other things. I didn't hear anything here that I haven't said at home. The same stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
I am worried, though, about the invasive species that is really, the root systems are destroying some of the foundations of the riverwalk. And that's just been going on way too long. So it is all about maintenance, but we've got to stop it. We're gonna lose parts of it.
Okay. Well, we'll contact them, I'll call them tomorrow and make sure. I think they've already been here this year, but I don't see any evidence of that on the riverwalk, so.
Mr. McCullough, do we have the resources needed, like manpower and resources, to accomplish what I hear here tonight?
I don't believe so. No. I don't think that two full-time people can be responsible for maintaining 15 parks, and then some of them are very sizable facilities. And, you know, before Thad retired, we had that conversation about putting together some justification to try to add to another person in that position next year.
Would three be enough?
It's 50% more than I've got now.
Our choice for city manager tonight, in his interview, was very supportive of volunteers and recognizing them, helping them, supporting them, even going so far as budgeting for them. So my guess, we're gonna have some conversation with him when he shows up about how he can help you, help us, help them. Because to not give them everything they need is a disservice both to them and to you and to your department. Because basically, when they're basically, you look mad, it's, I'm sure that's not a comfortable feeling about there. It's not a good spot.
Yeah. I mean, there's, the supplies and stuff, we have no issues with that, but, you know, the last time Kelly and, actually, Tom Olley and I sat down, it's landscaping stuff. And so, you know, that's not something we can do in-house. That's something
We used to contract
That's something that we have to contract out, but I'm talking about replacing.
Why did we stop?
The, well, the DDA used to contract for a landscaped company to maintain the riverwalk in the downtown area. And as the costs escalated, then it was asked if the, if the, if the Public Works should take that back over. We took that back over. That's how we added
And they're paying, they're paying you to do that, then, from what they would have paid a contractor?
Correct.
So why can't they
They were paying the city, and so
Basically, we should tell them we can't do it, anyway. They need to hire a private contractor.
Well, so then the city, then, we added to the part-time workforce with those funds to help, you know, cover that maintenance, but it still hasn't reached the level that
But your part-time workforce probably isn't doing that maintenance day-to-day, are they? Your part-time workforce is basically on motors, correct? Your part-
Not all the time, but
But their primary job is
They're spread out.
They're rarely on that riverwalk doing
Cleaning bathrooms. Well, they do, they do all of that, but we go through, we take a walkthrough with the DDA Design Committee every spring. And we knew that when we took this back over, there was way more work than we could bite off, especially in a year. So, and I know Kyle's back here. For years, he's been saying the same thing everybody else in this room has been saying, is that we need to get not one level, two levels, three levels higher. But we've prioritized what, we make a list of all the things that they see, they observe, and then we prioritize what we think we can take off in a given year. And so we've put more attention in the parking lots, as an example, and more of the trimming. And this year, we started pulling out some of the shrubbery that's overgrown. But to go through the list that Kelly and the volunteer groups are doing, there's no way we could do that in a year.
Well, why can't you give that back to the DDA and tell them to handle that themselves? And then that would free up your part-time person to do the parks.
Because you'd lose some of the part-time people. You wouldn't have the
Yeah, we'd lose some of them, but, yeah. Those are, those are more policy issues or decisions that should be discussed further.
Jeff, can I ask, what are they gonna do in winter time now? Because I've been told by the DDA, or downtown Department of Public Works, that they're gonna take the benches that Kelly did and redo them again. Why would they do that?
The, so there's, I don't have an exact count. I'm estimating there's probably 60 to 70 benches, the ornamental benches that are within the park system. They're down River Street and within the DDA District. They're along the riverwalk, not in the parks and on the beaches. And the Public Works, every winter, would bring in a quantity of them. I don't know what the number was, 10, 12 of them each year. And they would sand them, restain them, fix any of the metal that was, you know, deteriorated, and then reassemble them. And then they would go back out the next year. And they just rotated, rotated them in and out. I took, I didn't bring them tonight, but I took photos of some that we, brand-new ones that we installed three years ago, and they look like crap. I mean, they look like they've been out there for 20 years without anything done to them. So they require constant, constant maintenance. The last two years, we have not brought any benches in in winter time. And, because Kelly was challenging me, saying, well, I don't see any that looks like they've been refurbished. And she was correct. The guys brought in boat ramps from First Street Beach that were damaged due to the high water and the wave action. And so that became that winter project, to refurbish those. But I think we've got, quite frankly, I think we've got too many to be able to handle them. And, but they're memorial benches. So we get probably three to six of those requests every year, and they keep coming in. And so one of the things that I'd like to challenge and work with the Parks Commission on is, we need to find somewhere else to do a memorial, some other venue, some other something.
Bents are, right? Bents that require no maintenance.
Or, or changing the type of benches.
We should put no bench out that requires maintenance.
Right. And that's, that's what we've talked about long-term with the riverwalk, too, is, you know, you hear about, they look, the boards get brown, they get gray, they're slippery. There's not a whole lot we can do, except what Kelly's doing, is scrubbing those. And that would have to be done on, you know, probably every two, three years to keep them clean.
We could crack that out, too.
They used, but they used to be power washed.
Okay.
And when we went through the whole lighthouse playground and got an understanding of the chemical treatments that are in there, and found out that you can release that into the soils and then create soil contamination, we don't power wash that wood anymore.
Can we revisit that?
Well, the long-term thing that we've discussed at a staff level is eventually replacing that with composite wood. So we don't have those continuing maintenance issues, and they're textured, so they're not slippery when they're wet.
Can we revisit that theory that you can't power wash them because of the arcing? I mean, is that still hold true? I mean,
The, the problem is, the rule, and we went through this very extensively. I think you were on staff at the time.
Right, right.
And the issue is, the issue's not the board. Everybody's got, everybody's deck at home that was built before 2003 has the same issue. I have it at my house. It's not a hazard, but when it gets concentrated and gets in the soil below it, then it's a, then it's a pollution, it's, I can't think of the term, but it is a, considered by the state of Michigan, an actionable level. And then it gets into, it can seep from the soil, it moves quickly, and it gets in the groundwater. And so we've just steered away from that completely, to avoid that exposure.
Jeff, I have a question for you, then. And I know I've mentioned this before, but I was really not happy with the appearance of the River Street, of River Street, when I looked at the trash containers that also looked like the benches, and the planters that were used. They have paint chipping off of them, just, to me, just look like, like Kelly said, there's no pride. And it's, it's very discouraging to see that. I mean, if you're gonna put something away in the wintertime, at least put it away clean, or, you know, take some time to spray paint those wrought iron
So a couple of things
And, or something.
Yeah, you can't just spray paint them. Those are all powder coated.
I said something, but go
I understand. So we have been working with the DDA. Last winter, year and a half ago, we took all the trash cans from, trash can surrounds from downtown. We shipped those off, got them sandblasted, reprimed, and repowder coated. I think we did 10 of the planter boxes, and the discussion at the design committee level with the DDA has been not to take all 50 at once, but to do 10 or so a year. Because, again, those are 20 years old. And, but it goes beyond that. The life posts are gonna need to be repainted. I think we did the railings on the riverwalk six, seven years ago. That needs to be repainted again. There's, there's a lot.
There's been a lot of things brought up tonight. What, what direction does council want to give staff? Do you have any direction?
I just want to say a couple of things. So I'm hearing that you need help, basically. And there's a lot of people out in the audience that want to help. Kelly's done a lot in her group, and I think we need to encourage people. I know when I was on the Parks Commission, we did Adopt a Park program.
Mm-hmm.
I think we need to advertise that. We need to encourage people to come and help and volunteer. I don't think, as a city, we encourage enough of our residents to volunteer, and that we would work well with them, instead of criticizing what they're doing. I think we need to improve on that.
And we need to give them recognition and reward them. And that has to, that gratitude has to come from all of us, to the volunteers. And I don't think that that is, that is happening enough. And it needs to be a big splash. I've been another, I've been, I lived in Birmingham, and honestly, people don't really want much. They just want recognition for the work that they've done. And let's do it. Let's give them, give them that recognition, and give them the encouragement. Bring them water. Bring them treats. You see them working something.
Well, I'll put a shout-out. I mean, obviously, everybody's very aware of Kelly's group. She's always looking for volunteers. The Parks Commission has Friends of Manistee Parks, and they're trying to grow those efforts so that it's not a labor, just continuous labor, but as they identify specific projects. So I think you've got a Facebook page, correct? And Tom helps to organize those, those volunteers as well.
I think that if the, if the DDA is not working with you on certain things, or the boards or commissions, like, if you're having a problem with some of those people that, you know, they're just sitting there just to take up a seat, you need to let us know so they can be moved aside, and somebody can step up that's actually gonna do. Seriously, like, I'm I feel like it's falling on you, but I also know that you have to go through certain channels to get stuff done. And if the chamber and the DDA are not stepping up to help you, then we need to know, and they need to be held accountable, too, because it's not just, you know, hey, we commissioned Jeff and the DPW to do this, and we're just gonna step aside, and, you know, if he falls flat on his face, we're gonna be like, oh, we didn't have anything to do with it.
We've got really good working relationships with, I mean, I don't, I don't interact with the DDA Board, but the Design Committee is something that we interact with. The Chamber, certainly, we support their, their events. And we've, Josh and I have been working with them to get a little better communication when they've got new programs coming out, like the, what was the latest one? The Social District. You know, that got unveiled the week before the Fourth of July, so it was, it was a challenge for us to get all the stickers out, the banners up. And, and one other thing, because Kelly noticed it the day, the day after they went out, but the Social District requires trash cans to be placed at every point of entry and exit. There's not enough of the ornamental iron surrounds in the streetscape to be able to do that. So right now, there's just black 55-gallon drums out there to meet the law. That's not intended to be permanent. We have to find a better solution to that, and
Well, I mean, even like the commissions, like, I don't, there's the Park Commission. I don't even know what else there is, like Historic and the Tree Commission. Like, the Tree Commission should be helping you figure out what that thing is she was talking about, like, to, to, you know, fix it. Like, they should be stepping up. Like, you shouldn't be on a commission just to say, hey, I'm on a commission, and you take up a seat where somebody else can, you know, help you.
I will tell you that we used to have a Parks Commission and a Beautification Commission. And the Beautification Commission was doing all the things, a lot of the things that this, that this, the audience was talking about tonight. They were looking for things to do. They were looking for volunteer groups to get them done. They were working in a lot of those things. But at one point, probably six, seven years ago, there wasn't enough people to get a quorum on the Parks Commission. There wasn't enough people to get a quorum on the Beautification, so they got merged together. And then the Beautification part just kind of disappeared, if you will. I will tell you that the members that are volunteering for these commissions now have more energy, and more input, and more desire to do better for the community. This is the best it's been in the years that I've worked for the city.
If you remember, the Parks, the Beautification Committee, half the issue they had, where they butted heads with City Hall for every issue. They were, they were passionate, and they came to City Hall, and they talked to city manager, and talked to DPW, and they got resistance at every step.
Yeah, and I wasn't involved with them at that period.
I know, at the time, but it, it sounds really familiar to what we're hearing today.
I have a suggestion, that the Parks Commission at least be allowed to present, take, take on a portion of the city. They can't take it on all, but concentrate each year on some area, and formulate a budget. What do they think they need? This is the kind of dollars we need to fix this. We've gone, we've studied this, this is what we need. I would like to see that, action, and encourage that action. I think that, I think that you have a good Parks Commission now. I've been to their meeting, I've been watching some of their other meetings. I think you've got an energized group there. I would utilize their talents and their abilities to identify how much money something's gonna cost and the labor that they need.
So a couple of things are happening right now. The city has maintained a capital improvement plan for the parks for a number of years. It's not very well populated. So as projects come up, as grant opportunities come up, we, me install those into that capital improvement plan. What the Parks Commission has done is assigned parks to each of the commissioners to kind of do a review. Go visit, make a list, bring it back. And so they're collecting that data now. But also, we're working with Networks Northwest to do our, a new five-year Parks Master Plan. And so the first meeting with that group is the 22nd. Is that right? So they're facilitating a meeting here on the 22nd. And I really think that's an opportunity for, for the Parks Commission, but also when we get to a, you know, a council agenda, or even a public hearing on that, for people to voice and help prioritize those things. It's pretty easy for us to put dollars to those, and, but we're gonna need support on grant matches and things like that.
I, I'm sorry. I was just, I'm trying, just trying to figure a way to move some of this off of you. So I don't know if I was clear enough, like, for, like, the Tree, the Tree Committee, or Tree Commission, whatever it is. Like, you can go to them and say, hey, can you research this and figure out, you know, a way around it? You know, put them in charge of it. Like, the Historic Commission for downtown or whatever, have them do something. Like, say, hey, can you figure out a way, you know, we can get stuff paid for, if there's grants to do this and that? Like, take it off of you and move it to one of these committees that are supposed to be doing something. So it's not just
We've started some of those similar conversations.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. McCullough, it sounds to me like you're trying to work with the, these people daily, in trying to resolve some of the issues. Is that correct?
Well, there were some speed bumps early on. I think we're past all those. And the big one was, I was just worried about the union contract with the DPW and some of the work that was being requested to be done. And I wanted to make sure that the union wasn't gonna have an issue with that. We, it took us about two and a half weeks because we had members of the Bargaining Committee that were on vacation. But when we got them all together, they decided it wasn't an issue. I contacted the the volunteer group that, that, an hour later, and said, "We're good to go," so, I think we, all of those issues are cleared up.
I guess what I'm trying to say is that you're working with them to try to help them accomplish what their goals are, is that correct?
I believe so, do you believe that at this point?
I do now.
Okay.
Okay, so, would, would council, would council like to get kind of an update as, as we go along, as to what's happening and how they're accomplishing the goals, what's been accomplished, um, kind of stay on top of it a little bit?
It would be good, interesting to have them come back.
Yeah, so, maybe we could get, Mr. Bradford, uh, could we get like a report as to what's happened and what's been accomplished, and?
Yeah, that's certainly achievable, I could work with Jeff to figure out a, a convenient way to report out the information that's happening.
And I believe that Parks Annual Report is in October, is that right? So that, I know that group will be coming before you soon.
Hey Jeff, could you kind of fill in the people, when are they gonna do Memorial Drive every Saturday, I have an idea.
So, um, fixing Memorial Drive is a good news, bad news kind of thing, um, what's really pushing it, and we've, as the developments happen around there, we've tried to, to get grant money, we've tried to match, match up brownfield money, um, the best opportunity that we have is to work with the state of Michigan, because they're, they're gonna do a major rehab on the Thirty-One Bridge in two thousand twenty-three. I don't know how long that's gonna be, um, I suspect the traffic counters that you see spotted in town are from the state, kind of seeing what kind of an impact they're gonna have on us, this is, um, I'm expecting this is gonna be through the summer, so it's gonna be a major inconvenience to the community. In anticipation of that, the city applied for a grant to do structural rehab and painting on Maple Street Bridge, which we own, um, we're planning on going out for bids this, uh, fall, I think Sean said October, and we will close that bridge for two or three months during this winter, in order to do our work, because our work needs the bridge, uh, closed to traffic while we do that work. Then, in the summer of twenty-two, we anticipate a reconstruction of Memorial Drive from Thirty-One to Maple Street, well, to Washington, and then a resurfacing of Washington, um, down to Monroe Street, and then we also have some water main grade, water main upgrades to do under Washington Street. Um, the original pledge, and I've, I believe I've updated council on this, we had an original pledge from the state on what they thought they could participate, they've pulled that number back substantially, but through, we were in our budgeting process, and we think we've addressed how we can cover, uh, that shortfall, and then we've also applied for a three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant to help support that effort, um, but we haven't got word on whether we've received that or not, um, and then the state has also pulled back, their bridge project on Thirty-One is millions of dollars over budget, so now they're pushing back on how much they're gonna share, and, um, the former city manager and I have had conversations with our state representative, O'Malley, um, over that issue to try to get us some help, and keep that funding where it's at.
Do we have anything else from Mr. McCullough?
You know, I, I'm, just kind of in general terms, um, you know, just, just a reminder, we didn't get here just last week, okay, this is thirty years of things happening in our town, or maybe fifty, uh, of things happening in our town, that have slowly started to, um, get to the point of inability to, to repair them anymore, right? We've, our, our infrastructure has degraded itself in a number of different ways, our housing structure in Manasty, uh, is, is in need of repair in a lot of our areas, you know, the blight is all connected to that, our streets, we're not the only city in America that has problems with their streets, uh, it really comes down to, um, allocation of resources and funds, and, and again, we didn't get here overnight, it's not gonna happen overnight. My personal view is that our job is going to have to be looking at reallocating our, um, resources over the next budget cycle, to be able to address this, not just pass it off to somebody else, that's kind of our job, is to work on that budget, and it might mean that we're gonna have to look, uh, across all of the other budget areas, what can we move from one place to another in order to make some of these things happen, because it all happens with resources, uh, it's either money for the product, or, or it's people, and then the other issue is, you know, our, our two biggest resources are the, the city that we have, and then the people who live here, those are our biggest resources, and when we talk about volunteers, one of the things that I've never seen is any kind of formal volunteer structure, uh, you know, if you, if any of you have ever been in the military, every military base has a volunteer coordinator who helps with some of the things that we've been facing and, and discussing, so, that might be something for us to look at, how, is that, is that important enough for us to be able to back it up with, with some dollars, to be able to have somebody that works in that organization, um, and, and again, I, I gotta tell you, you know, what I've seen, my personal view is that we have a lot of people in our city who work and love their jobs, that work for the city, and do their damnedest to do everything that they possibly can within the confines of their jobs, right? So, part of our job, too, is going to be able to kind of look at, can we energize them, can we empower them to do more, uh, and find out where those resources, and again, it goes back into resourcing, but it also goes back into recognition, uh, you know, we've got great people, we just need to encourage them, uh, and then support them with, with the resources to be able to get them to do their job a little bit better also. As Dan used to say, you know, when you're pointing your finger at somebody else, there's three right back at you.
Anybody else?
Well, I just, I don't, I, I just have something to say, is that what I'm hearing is, you had a lot of people show up tonight, and address a lot of concerns, and I heard you talk about them, you know, back and forth, and you've got really good points, but then I heard everything kind of circle back to volunteerism, and there's a lot of people here that are, that are, are willing to do volunteerism, but I'm just, volunteerism's not the answer down on the Riverwalk, I mean, and I'm a professional contractor by trade, I walked down through there, I know what's going on down there, it's above the work of most volunteerism. A lot of people are willing to volunteer, but to send this thing circle back and say, "Oh, everything's great, we're gonna have this big volunteer group," I think is unrealistic.
I agree.
Anything else from council? Anything else come from council? This, council's gonna finish up here, just a second, um, anything else from council?
Not at this time.
Okay, um, we're gonna get a report, we're gonna be able to monitor the progress of what's, what's going on, um, we're gonna move on to others, anybody have anything else they'd like to discuss tonight?
Yes, we would like to talk about you.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's one of the things I was gonna bring up, um, Laura, could you kind of give us a brief, or Mr. Bradford, a brief overview of what we have to do to replace me here?
Sure, I'll talk about it, and I've got Laura here to jump in when I screw up, so, because she's really intimately knowledgeable about the election process, but it's, it's very clear in the Charter, Section two point six, about when a vacancy occurs, and it basically says, "Any vacancy occurring in the office of council shall be filled within thirty days by appointment of a resident of the district involved by a majority vote of the remaining council persons." So, my suggestion is, is that we get a consensus tonight to go ahead and advertise for a vacancy, effective August first, and the reason that we need to do that is, we really don't have time to, to get on one of the upcoming elections, and if we don't get candidates that are applied, and then, um, you put them in front of council to potentially appoint a replacement, then we're gonna end up having to have a special election, and that's going to be very costly, um, Heather estimates, because it'd be our own election, and it can't really piggyback on any of the other ones because of timing to be between ten and twelve thousand dollars, so if we can advertise for the position, we can get candidates in, um, and have them kind of ready to go, uh, when, when you step down, Roger, then we would be able to, uh, schedule a meeting where council could consider those candidates and potentially appoint somebody, so that would be my recommendation.
Does anybody have any problem with that recommendation, council?
I, I think it would probably be good if, if, in your advertisement, if you could at least put the area, so people, I don't think people think of what specific streets are involved in Roger's district, or et cetera, so it might be best if you, if you highlighted that a little bit, I know it might cost you a little bit more for the ad, but those are the people.
No, I think that's an excellent idea, and we'll make sure that happens.
So, do we have a consensus to have the staff advertise for this?
Right, yes.
Yes.
Okay, and, do we have anything else?
Yes, um, as you know, uh, Mr. Bradford has been dual-hatted for, uh, a while, and will probably be dual-hatted for, uh, a couple of months more, probably, before we actually get, uh, a new city manager in, and, uh, I think that it would only be fair and reasonable that, uh, he's provided compensation for actually doing two jobs at the same time, and I think that is normal practice, uh, and, uh, my suggestion would be to take the difference between the, the last city manager's salary and his current salary, and then have that be the prorated difference as his compensation for doing those two jobs.
And I believe that would be about?
Would be around three hundred and six dollars a week.
That needs to come forth before council and for a motion, does it not?
Yes, it would have to be on a regular agenda.
Right.
Do we have a consensus, though, that that would be the way to go? Anybody again?
I think it's fair to look at it.
Any objections? Council members, do you have anything else tonight?
Other than thanking the audience for-
Yes.
-really opening up our eyes, things that we may have seen, but you certainly, by voicing it and, and taking the time to be here, it drives it home, so thank you.
And I echo that, thank you very much for your time, it's, um, much appreciated. Kelly, hang in there.
Thank you, Kelly.
Yeah, thank you, Kelly.
Keep Manasty proud.
If nothing else from council? We're adjourned.
Do we turn these in again?